... 11 states of America, and through the public which stands one nation under God in his soul with liberty and justice for all.
Roll.
Graham Cassoun.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Yep.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Approval of minutes.
Tonight we have two council minutes, one from October 16th and one from November 5th.
Motion by Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence?
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city, anyone would like to address this council, please step forward. Okay, reports of the department heads, economic development.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to remind all that the tree lighting is this Friday. Special guest Santa will arrive. This past Saturday, Heri Rotolo Electric and IBEW Local 363 decorated the tree with approximately 2,700 LED lights. So, we'd like to thank those guys and everyone that worked on that last Saturday. So, we're all set for Friday night. The event kicks off at 6 o'clock. Step off of the parade at 6:30. Right now, we capped at 30 participants in the parade, so that equates to a good 300 to 400 people that'll be in the parade. Also, right after the tree lighting, we have a free showing of Wonderful Life at the Paramount Theater. Lot going on this weekend. This is our kickoff holiday season for our downtown, Small Business Saturday. All the great events going on in the shops, everybody's open and ready to do business for the holiday season. Also, at Paramount, we're gonna be showing Bohemian Rhapsody. So, just come and enjoy downtown, the city, and, you know, watch Santa light that gorgeous tree that's at Festival Square. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any questions for Maria?
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. DPW Commissioner.
All construction projects are moving along well, with exception of the weather that's been holding us back. We got over $10 million worth of construction that is taking place in the city as we speak. The wastewater treatment plant, we have an emergency situation in there with the screw pumps. They are primary pumps, basically, for the wastewater treatment plant, and they are over 30 years old. And it's time for them to be replaced, and thankfully, the mayor and the common council approved the funding for us to replace it. In the meantime, there's some emergency work taking place in there where we have to order emergency pumps to be incorporated into the project, and they will be used as part of the permanent installation, so nothing is wasted. And we appreciate very much the support of the mayor and the common council and the common council president. However, the wastewater treatment plant, in spite of all these issues, in there, it continues to generate revenue for the City of Middletown. Last month, we generated over $50,000 from septic haulers, and they're the highest in September since we started accepting sludge and generating revenue from the wastewater treatment plant since 2006. So, over $50,000 we generated last month in revenue. Of course, we're gonna have to continue to spend money in there. The screw pump by themselves is around $3 million. But, like the mayor, he keeps updating you, we have other sources of revenue now that are kicking in, and they'll be very helpful to meet our requirement to upgrade the wastewater treatment plant. The Black Dirt Sewer, that's a major project, approximately $4 million in there. We're getting to a conclusion there, except for change orders, which is basically additional work that we found out during the work, during the construction of the main sewer line of the Black Dirt Sewer, that they needed to be upgraded and replaced from Ashley Avenue. And so, the work is gonna continue to take place. The majority of the work is done. Lake Avenue was paved today, and it's open for traffic. The bulk of the work is completed again, except for some change orders. So, you'll see some activities every now and then into the spring. That's by Boy's Excavation, and they've done really a very good job with them and Clark Patterson Lee, the consultant on the project. The mayor has updated you when he went to Albany in there, getting a grant for $2.96 million in there. That's a huge achievement for the mayor and the common council to get this money. We've been applying for this grant, City of Middletown, to replace, upgrade our water storage tanks, which they are in real need for upgrade and replacement, some of them. We've been applying for this grant for several years. And finally, the mayor, he went up to Albany, and he came up with the good news. They gave him the news before the press release, even that they're gonna be awarded the $2.96 million. This money has already been budgeted as part of our capital improvement. So, we're gonna have to do something with approximately $3 million in there. We have a 12-inch water main that was installed in the 18, late 1800, that it goes under the park across from Pilgrim's Estate, and the park is gonna be renovated. So, we have to abandon that 12-inch line, which is very old and is subject to failure at any given minute. So, we have contacted with the blessing of the mayor, under the direction of the mayor. We contacted the consultant in there to give us a price for replacing that 12-inch line. So, you know, the money was appropriated in the capital budget for water storage tank, but maybe we can grab some of it and reallocate that for the 12-inch water main. You may recall also Irene and Lee, back in August 2011, finally, we're getting to a conclusion with FEMA. They just sent the mayor last week about change order, approving it for about $230,000, which is basically, DPW, we continued to fight and push, fight and push, until we got every penny that we deserve, you know, out of FEMA, and they finally approved the last one for $230,000. So, we started 2011, now we're 2018, and we got the money approved. And I will conclude right now. If you have any questions?
Any questions for Jacob? Jacob, Maple Hill Park, retention pond, how's that going?
Obviously, the weather has been an extreme, extreme problem for us, for both West Main Street, Monhegan Brook realignment, and for Maple Hill, the two different projects. Maple Hill, it's supposed to be concluded the end of September. Tomorrow, we're gonna be paving Maple Avenue, weather permitting, it's gonna be paved in there. It was cut up in there because they put a big drainage pipe under there. However, there's a big issue in there, which is dredging Maple Hill Pond. It has to be dredged. We found out it's very shallow in there. The cost for dredging it is about 100, between 100 and $130,000. It's quite a bit of money. We would like to do it under the ongoing project in here, as requirement of this project. So, that will be delayed in there. The Army Corps of Engineer will approve only one method, which is a clam shell, they call it, which is a big crane in there. They have a big clam shell in there to go and dredge the pond. This is ancient technology, but that's what they will approve only without a permit. Otherwise, we'll have to go through a pond disturbance permit, and that will take months and months to get approved by Army Corps of Engineers. So, that's where we are right now. We approached the Army Corps of Engineer. We said, "How about we use specialty long-arm excavators in there?" And they're gonna consider it, the Army Corps of Engineer. We doubt it, so we contacted the contractor, told them, "Please try to get us, find a clam shell around, so we can use it." So, the Army Corps of Engineer will approve us dredging the pond without a special permit, under the general nationwide permit, we can do it. So, that's where we are. That's not gonna be done by the end of this year. It's gonna have to be, we're gonna go back and forth and see what we can do. But, we're pushing as hard as we can. The dredging should be done. If we don't do it under this project, we're gonna be stuck with the cost of 100 and over $100,000. So, we should be doing it right now, and hopefully, we can get the money from HUD under this project as a requirement.
Thank you.
So, my apologies again. I know it dragged on this project. We sincerely apologize for the public. But, most of the backyards on West Main Street, with the first phase of the project Maple Hill, their backyards were restored months ago, and the residents are very happy with it. But, I know part of the park is not available, and we regret that. But, that's part of, you know, part of construction, unfortunately, and hopefully, we will get to enjoy much better park and ponds when it's all completed.
Alderman Massey?
Jacob, I know it's on our website, but if you could just, for people who are watching this meeting, quickly, give us a pickup of, schedule for the pickup of the garbage and recycling due, that we have two days off of holiday.
You said quickly?
Yeah.
Please.
All right. So, basically, like every holiday we have, we have Thanksgiving holiday, so we're not gonna be doing any pickup on Thursday. So, Thanksgiving, our guys will take the day off. However, we will pick up, I think it's gonna be the first word, we will pick it up Friday morning. Recycling will be picked up Saturday morning. So, just like any other holiday, everything will be pushed over one day, delayed one day.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jacob.
Yes, sir.
Fire chief.
Good evening, everybody. We'll be participating in the tree lighting as well. And a couple of thanks to a couple of department heads that worked with the fire department to help us out. We had some transportation issues with recruits that went to the academy. I'd like to say thank you, Chief LaWancho, loaded us a car, and we needed some quick repairs at Central, and thank you, Jacob, for the repairs at Central. The recruits, they finish up their training around the end of December. They go on their trucks the 1st of January. So, 1st of January, we should have, every group will be filled with seven drivers, except for, I think it's Group One. We have one more recruit that is in the academy, and he finishes in February, he graduates. Then, he go into like about three months of training. So, by May, June, every truck, every group will have a driver for every shift. So, thank you to the city for hiring the firemen. And a group of us just got back from going out on a trip to the factories for the new trucks. We went to a plant for the engine. We saw the new engine one, how far it's coming along. It's about 50% complete. They'll be working on the body of that next. We finished the specs for Engine Two, and we did the specs for Truck Three, and they're heading into the building stages, probably within a month, so.
Any questions for the fire chief? Thank you, chief. Police chief.
Good evening. Just a couple of quick things, reminders this evening. Overnight parking did go into effect November 15th. I just want to remind everybody that from 2:00 to 6:00, 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., there's no parking on the streets. And just a reminder, we did have an early snowstorm this year, and just to remind everybody that during snow time, that we need to have all the cars off the street. We don't want to tow anybody, but that's what it's really gonna come down to when we have to, to give access to DPW to clear the streets properly. It is a last resort, so if we can get the cooperation of the community to remove the cars from the streets, especially during the snow, would be greatly appreciated. With the holiday season kicking off, we are going to step up our enforcement, specifically to DWI. We do enforcement regularly throughout the year, but we participate in the Stop DWI campaign and the Crackdown campaign that is countywide. Starting this weekend, we'll have additional enforcement out for that. So, I just want to remind everybody, as you do indulge and enjoy the holiday season, to drink responsibly, use some of the resources that are available to us with our taxis and Ubers and other forms of transportation to avoid any issues for you or anyone else. Lastly, I'd just like to wish everybody, on behalf of the Middletown Police Department, a safe and happy, healthy Thanksgiving. Other than that, if you have any questions for me?
Any questions for the police chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Superintendent Recreation?
I do want to give a quick report on the dog park. A lot of you have probably gotten some phone calls of, we definitely have a drainage issue up there. We are very well aware of that issue. In the summer, manpower and equipment was an issue, and now the weather is just not cooperating with us at all. We did have a resident tried to take it into their own hands, made it worse and made it dangerous for the public. We did get some pea stone up in there, but we want the public to know that is not the fix. And obviously, after the storm, it is very wet in there. So, the project will be done properly as soon as the weather permits. We're hoping still this fall, if not, very early in the spring. We'll also be working with the shade tree committee to make a nice walkway in there and add some trees and some shade. And the next meeting, I'll have a little report. I think we have a resident stepping up to help us as well, which will be a great thing. But, we will get that dog park fixed. We are very well aware of it, and we're not ignoring it. We just haven't had the proper resources, and now not the weather to get it fixed the right way. You'll see in your resolutions tonight, the 10K Classic has donated $500 to the mayor's youth council, like they do every year, because the kids go out and help during the race. They've also donated $500 to the Middletown Cares Coalition that still exists and is involved in the community. You'll also see United Way is reimbursing Middletown Cares with a mini grant to accept the $500, and that money went towards helping with the pop-up parties and Cops and Kids Day. So, we thank the United Way, and we thank the Classic 10K. You'll also see we have just a transfer of money within our budget, our operating budget. We just have some more equipment, backhoe that needs tires replaced, and a sander that broke down in the first snowstorm, so that's what that money's gonna be for. And check out our website, all the holiday programs. I know Cops and Cookies is already full. We have Gingerbread House. We have Santa Paws this Saturday, Pictures with the Dog. As Maria mentioned, the parade. The Polar Express will be at the Paramount. I could go on and on, check our website, call the rec department. You'll see the mailboxes are all out, Letters to the North Pole, which is a very popular program. So, any questions, just give us a call. And may everybody have a great Thanksgiving.
Any questions for Chris? Thank you. City clerk?
Just repeat again what Chris said about the website. It is, well, a lot going on. The website's being updated as soon as we can, especially with the weather, and also all the events that are going on in the calendars. Just a little update on the IDs. Still working on the specs. There's a couple more things that just have to be done. We need a couple more quotes, but I figure we should be ready by February 1st. And wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. That's all I have for this.
Any questions for John? Thank you, John. Public hearings?
Tonight, we have a public hearing for a two-lot subdivision for 5 to 9 Lafayette Avenue. I'll read the notice. Notices of a public hearing. Notices hereby given that the City of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 20th, 2018, on or as near 8:00 p.m. as possible. Common Council Chamber, Second Floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed two-lot subdivision from 5 to 9 Lafayette Avenue for the City of Middletown, Section 42, Block 2, Lot 8. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed two-lot subdivision. A full copy of the two-lot subdivision plans were available in the city clerk's office, Room 12, at City Hall, 16 James Street. This is by order of the common council. This was published in the Times-Heald Record on November 12th and November 13th, and also on our city website.
Okay, at this time, the public hearing is now open.
And for the record, you have the mailings?
Yeah, I got the original.
Could you just give those to Karen, please? Thank you.
Just give us a brief.
So, basically, I have a 188-foot lot that I'm looking to split up into two lots, 94-foot of frontage on each one, so it exceeds the limits. Designed it so the houses are pushed towards the center to have as little impact on the existing houses there. So, my center side yards, we designed at 15 feet, and so that allowed us 35 feet between the neighbor's house, or the neighbor's property lines. It's actually gonna be almost 50 feet on both sides from current residences. And it's a pretty wooded lot, so when we clear it, I'm gonna leave as much of a buffer there to affect any current residents. Been there forever.
Okay. Anyone from the public have any questions? Anyone from the council?
We just need your name.
Patricia Ligio. I live at 8 and 1/2 Lafayette Avenue, across the street from where they're gonna be building. I wanted to know, are they single-family homes, or?
They're a single-family.
Yes.
Oh, okay. That's all I wanted to know.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the council? A motion to close?
Shall move.
Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Green. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public hearing is now closed.
Thank you.
Okay. Remarks to the mayor?
Before we begin, I'd like to introduce, well, first, let me say, I'm sure you're all aware that Bonnie Bernaski, our current city assessor, will be retiring. Bonnie's last day in City Hall will be December 20th, and the, so we have been looking, and we didn't look hard, for a replacement. We were very fortunate that there was availability right here in Orange County of a certified assessor with quite a bit of experience, the deputy assessor of the town of Warwick. And I'd like to introduce the board to Mary Ann Feely. You've had her resume, and I'm sure any questions that you had, you've directed towards her, if any. But, if Mary Ann would come up, I'd like to introduce her to both you and the public. Mary Ann Feely. The resolution tonight will be to appoint her to the unexpired term of Bonnie. There's a little language in the resolution, because there's gonna be like a four-day overlap. But, we, we're looking at whether we can do the six-year term right away, but we're being told at this point that we can only fill the unexpired term. But, if it's determined that we can go beyond that, then we will fill the term immediately, because as you know, the state law requires a six-year term for assessors. So, this is Mary Ann. If you have any questions, and please introduce yourself and give a little background.
Mary Ann, as you know, I've worked in the assessment community for over 20 years, and I'm looking forward to serving the City of Middletown residents.
Any questions? You might recognize that this is the daughter of Judge Owen from the town of Walkhill, and the Owen family, Middletown area family for many, many years, and well-respected. And once we knew of Mary Ann's availability, we did go out and ask her to consider the job, and thankfully, she has. So, we appreciate your unanimous support this evening on the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mary. The, tonight, we're scheduled to vote on the budget, and I'm gonna be requesting that the council table the budget resolution vote. As you know, we haven't had a civil service contract in place since 2014, end of 2014. We have worked out a memorandum of understanding, or memorandum of agreement, with the bargaining unit that will cover us for seven years. We were hoping that the MOA would have been signed and the proposed contract ratified by this evening's meeting. I don't think it would be a wise step for us to approve the budget, including the increases of the MOA, unless we have a ratified contract. We're under no deadline, so I've asked Don Paris that he did not have to make a presentation tonight, or advised Don that he did not have to make the presentation tonight. Late today, the union did advise me that, through our attorney, that they will be signing the MOA tomorrow, and they will be introducing the MOA to the union for ratification early next week, or sometime next week. We then will ask for a special council meeting to do two things. One, to ratify the contract, and hopefully, that very same night, to vote on the budget. So, I'll give you an outline of the budget as it stands right now. As you know, you've all received copies, but for the public. Our general fund appropriations this year are $40,805,000. Our water fund, $7.4 million. Sewer, $5.6 million. Debt service, $4.1 million. Community development, $1 million. And the Golden Area Seniors Bus Transportation, $115,000. For a total spending package of $58,835,498. The total revenue, obviously, is offset by the, all of our different revenue items, such as sales tax, which had a pretty significant increase. Our tax levy for 2019 is $19,634,971, which is under the 2% cap, once again, which qualifies Middletown residents, once again, for the tax rebate check. There is a slight use of fund balance in the budget. We have a sewer fund balance transfer of $275,000 and into the, into debt service, or from debt service into sewer, I'm sorry. And other than that, the balance, the budget is pretty much balanced. The highlights of the budget for this year, and we'll be making another presentation on the night of the vote, for the public to see the slides, is the operations have basically gone down from $6.6 million, $58,000 to $5.6 million. Special items has gone up slightly. Personal services have gone up from $16,700 to $18,100,000. That is the payroll for the City of Middletown. The reason for that big jump is because we're moving that four years of CSCA, or five years of CSCA increases all into one year. Employee benefits are down slightly, and debt service is up slightly. Pension costs, as a percentage of budget, our pension costs are almost 8% of our budget for 2019. Our workman's comp costs are almost 5%. Our health insurance costs are almost 17%, and our payroll taxes are about 5%. So, as you can see, the significant of costs that go to having a large employee workforce. The property tax per thousand for 2018 were $83.33. For 2019, it will be $84.45, which is an increase of $1.33, and the percentage of the 1.33. The estimated household of a 30,000, I think it was a $30,000 assessment. Whoop, you're right, Tom. It's about $33 the impact on budget for the annual impact. And water and sewer rates also are included in that number. So, our total tax levy is just slightly under the cap for 2019, as set by the state of New York. So, if you have any questions, we're available for more review in the office. And I want to congratulate Don and thank Don for his hard work and his office work on preparing the budget, and Alderman Massey and council president for their participation Thursday, the Middletown School District is doing a Thanksgiving lunch at the Monhegan Middle School. I was there today with some of the governor's staff to, the governor had sent down 120 turkeys that they have received donations on, and part of the giveaway was at the that they have received donations on, and part of the giveaway was at the Monhegan School today. And we, I believe it's 11 to 1, there's going to be bus transportation. So anybody in need of a meal on Thanksgiving Day, please check the school site. Just don't invite Mr. Massey to your house. That's a warning. And I saw, I believe the soup kitchen is doing something Jerry from Noon You Said. Yes, and we will, Jerry has advised me also that he will be opening the senior center, because it's anticipated to be a cold day, as a warming center, for the daytime warming center. So anyone who's in need of, you know, a warm place to stay, the senior center will have accessibility to it. Maria had mentioned the Christmas tree parade coming, the Christmas parade coming up. We also have, for the first time this year, a celebration of the Festival of Lights, which will be at Something Sweet Park on December 5th, not Something, one for Downtown Park, next to Something Sweet. It's, I believe, set for 4:00 or 4:30. And there'll be some refreshments served at Something Sweet. This will be a menorah lighting. It's our first one we're doing. Last year, we participated with the temple, at Temple Sinai. This year, we'll be doing it downtown. And we're looking forward to a nice crowd for that Festival of Lights menorah lighting also, in celebration of Hanukkah. Jacob touched on the 12-inch water line. I did have a discussion today. We're checking with our bond counsel to see if we can reappropriate some of the money that was set aside for the water tank on the borrowing, for the purposes of the 12-inch water line. As you know, that line is late 1800s, and needs to be replaced. And we, we have an opportunity now, with the grant money, to do the replacing of the water lines. So hopefully it'll be easier to do that way, rather than go through a whole process of another borrowing or emergency break throughout the winter. So we're hoping to get it done as quickly as possible. And we'll keep you up to date on that. And lastly, I have the, as you know, there's a survey online about alternate side of the street parking. Some people think it's a conspiracy. It's not a conspiracy. We're not designing questions to get a result. But we've had almost 400 people participate already, and it's good. The chief touched on some of the problems that we did have Thursday night, with people leaving their cars on the roads. The police department does not want to tow, but we have received quite a few complaints about people leaving their cars on the road, and the long-term impact on their neighborhood, such as having to go around the cars, not getting plowed curb-to-curb, you know, and there's only so many times you can come back and do plowing, if people are leaving their cars out in the street. So I think it's to take the warning, that when you have more than two inches of snow, get your car off the road. Do not park on the lawn. I'm hoping that the council, once the survey is closed, will look at some form of long-term solution for multiple cars on small lots. And I don't think the solution is to allow parking on front lawns. So there are, some of the comments are very opinionated from people. And some actually don't make too much sense, but, you know, like resident parking, resident parking doesn't take care of snow removal, or parking on lawns. But we're, we're at least looking at the problem for the first time in a long time. And as you ride through the neighborhoods, you can see it's getting worse and worse and worse, because just, you know, kids are all getting cars at 16, and it's just becoming much more of a problem. So we are going to start ticketing and towing. When we have a, you know, cars parked in the street during the snowstorm, especially overnight, there's absolutely no excuse for it. So we're trying to look for an area that we can at least have you bring your car to, your extra car to, park it there in some of the public lots. Canal Street is one of them. It's an empty lot, so I would recommend people, if you don't have room to park your car, go down on Canal Street and park it. There's no time limit on the parking lot down there. And you have to make some arrangements to shuttle back and forth, if necessary. But please, do not park on the street, do not park on the lawn. And based on the comments and some of the survey questions, that it's really annoying a lot of people, that when they go out the door, they see someone parked on the sidewalk, or parked on their front lawn. And they do believe that it's impacting their property value. So we're asking for cooperation in that area. And that's all I have. If you have any questions?
Any questions for the mayor? Alderman Francois.
Yes, has the survey ended at the end of this month?
I think it goes through November. Maria, do you know the answer to that? It's on here somewhere. Yeah, I think it goes into November, end of November.
End of November, okay.
As of yesterday, we had 394 responses, but it's still continuing right now, I think.
November 30th.
November 30th, okay. And please take the survey, too. It's helpful as we proceed along.
Did we send out to Nixol also?
Nixol on the survey. I think we've, it's on our website, it's on our Facebook, and it's been shared. It's getting out to people. But the more people that take it, the better idea we'll have. And we also ask for them to identify the street, so we can see where, where they live, and exactly what the problem is. Some streets you're not going to be able to do it on, but others you will be able to do it on.
Anyone else? Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Remarks of Alderman? Alderman Massey.
I have a couple of things. I'll try to be as quickly as possible. As a military veteran and a member of American Legion Post 151, I'd like to thank Presidential Park Elementary School, and especially Mrs. O'Boyle's third-grade class. Mrs. O'Boyle, by the way, her mother used to be, still is, Anne Riley, who used to be a fourth ward alderman. They did a tremendous job that, one morning up at the school. And if you'd have just seen, there were about 12 or 13 of us up there. And all these third graders getting up and doing the pledge of allegiance, it just, it was, it was very emotional, very nice, and certainly appreciated. I also would like to thank the Middletown Elks Lodge for, again, putting on a celebration of Veterans Day. It was well done. The mayor was there, spoke, and thank you to the Elks Club. Thirdly, IFF, the Professional Firefighters Association, their 125th celebration was the 11th. In the evening, it was a dinner, and I was invited. I was there, and I certainly appreciate it. They did a nice job. And like I say, I certainly appreciate the invitation. And finally, I want to thank the Department of Public Works and all involved in the tremendous job they did last Thursday during the terrible snowstorm. Thank you, each and every one of you. And finally, Happy Thanksgiving.
Alderman Tobin.
Just, Mr. Massey, I went to the Elks Club, too. It was a great celebration. I thank them for putting it on. Any chance we get to honor our vets who've defended our country, it's important. And also, just want to wish everybody Happy Thanksgiving.
Alderman Green.
Thank you. I do want to thank Darren Cross, the Middletown Little League. For last night, there was a small, well, not small at all, actually a large, given the weather, especially, candlelight vigil in honor of Jennifer Paracella. If I botched the last name, please excuse me. Okay, that's correct. Thank you. And, you know, really, if you don't know, she lost her life in a tragic accident in the city just this past week. And just the outpouring of support for she and her family and friends was amazing. You know, given such a short notice, what an amazing group. Amazing things said about her, and anyone who has touched her community so much, as much as she did, really deserves our, you know, support for she and her family, you know, our condolences sent to them, and wish well for her children. On a happy note, I'm very excited about tree lighting this Friday. It's always packed, so get there early. You'll be warm enough. It's all right. I know it's going to be cold. But when everyone's together and that tree lights up, it's really something very special. And Happy Thanksgiving. Everyone, please be safe, especially when you're traveling. Thanks.
Alderman Johnson.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to attend the Orange Classic Dinner two weeks ago. Rink was there as well. And I was asked by Mr. Giannino to make a few remarks on behalf of the city. So since it was a physical fitness theme, I talked about the Rodriguez Park, no, Fancher Davage Extension. And I did mention that Heritage Trail was about to be completed. There was a modicum of a round of applause for that. And I also mentioned the fact that we're trying to have our parkland at the reservoir. So the word's out on that. It was well received. One of the recipients of one of the checks that was given out that evening was for the homeless shelter. And they mentioned the fact that the real challenge of the homeless shelter is for volunteers. So I went to the orientation meeting next night. It was fortuitous. And it is true, they cannot open the doors unless they have one person as a director and two people as volunteers. And if they don't have those two people there at 9 o'clock, people can't go in. So the orientation was very educational. It's a really good experience. Whether I would be able to do that, it's an 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM shift, so it's, depends what you have to do the next day at 8:00 AM. There were a lot of Turo students there, and that was nice to see, that they were going to kind of buddy up and sign up. And there was probably about eight or 10 of them. So the directors were excited about that. It's been in the newspaper that the church is having difficulties. They have repaired their heating system, but they need to kind of pay for it. And we wish Pastor and the church the best of luck in their fundraising efforts. Thank you very much.
Graham Cassoon.
Good evening. I'd just like to echo Alderman Green. My hearts and my thoughts and prayers go out to the Paracella family on the loss of Jennifer. She leaves behind a large, beloved family, and her children go to school with my kids as well. And I just hope that we, as a community, as I've seen us do before, can rally around this family. This is definitely a very difficult time with this tragic loss, and heading into the holidays. And the vigil was a wonderful way to show our support, but I know there's more things we can do. And I just hope we can band together around this family that could use our support as a family, which only Middletown can do. On the business side of things, next Tuesday evening marks the annual Holiday Third Ward Meeting, which everyone looks forward to, because it features my cheesecake. All are welcome, even our ward jumpers, but you know, we know. It's a good meeting, right, Paul? So that'll be Tuesday night, 7:00 PM next week. We'll be here. Just a reminder, on the school side, December 4th, I believe it's the 4th, is the budget, there's like a referendum, vote referendum for some capital improvements to our schools. It's tax levy neutral, but please, if you don't know about it, or what they're planning to do, please educate yourself, and go out and vote. This is our kids. This is their education. I always get a little sad when I see the tragically low number turnout for school elections, but let's go out and see what we're going to do. I'm a little actually excited about what this means for our kids in the district. So December 4th, mark your calendars. If you don't know where to vote, look it up. Beyond that, I'm done. I hope everyone has a safe and happy Thanksgiving weekend. Enjoy the long one.
Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. The candlelight vigil for Jennifer, I mean, there was so much sorrow, but so much love. And I thank Pastor Williams and Mr. Cross and everyone else who helped to facilitate that. But again, it's the Middletown community feeling the loss, but feeling their sense of togetherness and vowing to keep that closeness and keep that love going. And we wish the family well. I do believe they have a GoFundMe page, so please check into that. I thank Frank Giannino and the people from the Classic 10K, and they always give back to the community. It's a classic and classy event that they run. And it's, again, puts Middletown on the map, and it's a great thing. So my thanks to them. I thank all the people who went out and voted. I think Middletown had an excellent turnout. So thank you for participating, and I hope that number keeps growing up, going up, because it's just important. It's part of really participating in your city, your country, your democracy, and not just standing by and watching. The warming station, it's middletownwarmingstation.com. So yes, it's a long, it's a long night of volunteering, but they depend on the volunteers, and they depend on the people who bring the food. So it's easy to find. Thank you, Andrew, for the website. It's middletownwarmingstation.com. You can sign up for either. You can get information there. There's phone numbers and links to anything you would need. I forgot to mention, last time when we voted on the city IDs, and I was thanking people, I forgot to thank Alex Smith, because Alex has put in a lot of work, and he's been our guiding light behind this, and making sure it's effective and that it works well. So thank you, Alex. And Happy Thanksgiving. Happy holidays to everyone. And hopefully, we'll see you Friday night at the tree lighting. Thank you.
Alderman Jean Francois.
Good evening. I just want to wish everyone a Happy Thanksgiving and be safe. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Alderman Burr.
Thank you. As Joe mentioned, and Jacob, that is our trash night, and we will be delayed from Wednesday to Thursday. And we appreciate if you couldn't put your garbage out, because we all know it's crow season. And we have a lot of visitors coming into the town, and we don't want the garbage all over the streets. And that's all I have. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and enjoy.
New business.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, to authorize the Corporation Council and the City Treasurer to hold a tax lien sale on Saturday, December 29th, at 10:00 AM in the common council chambers, to offer for sale of properties which have delinquent taxes, assessments, and/or water and sewer rents as of prior October 1st, 2017.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion?
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, to authorize a police escort for the St. Joseph's procession on the Feast of Our Lady of Guadalupe on Sunday, December 9th, 2018, beginning at 12:00 PM and lasting until 1:00 PM.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion?
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, to close streets at 6:00 PM for the annual tree lighting ceremony to be held on Friday, November 23rd, 2018.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion?
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, to authorize the treasurer to transfer $2,000 within the senior 2018 budget to cover personnel overtime expense and unemployment insurance expense.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion?
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, to amend the city code, Chapter 460, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 46021, four-hour parking on Highland Avenue from Cantrell Avenue to Prospect Street on the easterly side in front of the YMCA.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Jean Francois. Any discussion?
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, to transfer $5,000 within the 2018 budget needed to cover the cost of repairing a police vehicle reimbursed from Travelers Insurance.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion?
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, to authorize the treasurer to transfer $10,000 within the 2018 Recreation and Parks Department for repairs to equipment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Cassoon. Any discussion?
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, to accept the donation and deposit into the existing trust and agency account for the amount of $500 for the mayor's youth council from the Classic 10K Road Race.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion?
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, to accept the donations totaling the amount of $1,000 for the Middletown Cares Coalition from the Classic 10K Road Race and the United Way.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion?
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, to authorize the treasurer to establish a capital line funding for the Restore New York $500,000 grant, with $1,000 to cover application costs, pay the application fee of $620.48, and temporarily transfer money from the community development to be paid from the grant in the amount of $1,000.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion?
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
community development to be paid from the grant in the amount of $1,000.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, to approve the city of Middletown 2019 annual budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, to authorize the Mayor to sign an amendment of the Solid Waste Processing and Disposal Agreement with TBE Montgomery LLC, to extend the existing contract to end April 30th, 2021.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, to concur with the Mayor's appointment of Marion Feeley as Commissioner of Assessment from December 17th, 2018, to fill the unexpired term of the Commissioner of Assessment expiring on September 30th, 2019.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
So moved.